To call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. I am Secretary Anupam Chugsidhu, so thanks for being here, everyone. Welcome to the May fourteenth Plymouth Canton Community Schools Board of Education meeting. As you may see, it's a smaller group today. We have President Wilson and Vice President Christensen absent this evening. So in accordance to Robert's rules, it is my duty as secretary to call the meeting to order and conduct an election of a temporary chairperson to preside over tonight's meeting. I would like to now invite a motion for a nomination for a chairperson pro tem for this evening's meeting. As a reminder, there is no second needed on this motion.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Secretary Sidhu to be chairperson pro tem for the remainder of this meeting.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor say yea.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, I will preside over the rest of the meeting. Alright, so let's go back to our original meeting as they're normally planned. Let's do a roll call and we will start to my left.
Patty McCoyn, thank you so much for being out here tonight. It's a beautiful day out, so we appreciate your attendance or watching it later.
Hi, I'm Patrick Keo. Thanks for joining us this evening. It was a lovely walk up here.
I'm Judy Westra, member. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Dr. Merritt, could you introduce yourself and your staff?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Diane Robertson. We want to thank her for being here, taking our minutes every board meeting. Also, we have Ms. Carly Raze, our Assistant Director of Communications and Marketing here. She's taking care of our technology needs. I would like the remaining members to introduce themselves to you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Curtis Quitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
Good evening. Jill Minnick, Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, Abdul Manh Yun, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Welcome, Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent Student and Family Engagement.
Alright, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we are moving on to our first item. I'm looking for a motion for the adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chairperson Pro Tem, I move that we adopt our agenda and approve our consent agenda. Action item twenty-four oh five seventy-three.
I'll second it.
Okay, it was moved by Treasurer Keo, seconded by Member McCoyn. And Dr. Merritt, could you walk us through?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions. Since our last time together, we have a new hire for your consideration as well as the hiring of the next principal of Discovery Middle School. I see him looking at me from the audience and we're very excited about his consideration for appointment this evening. We have some resignations and retirements for your consideration as well as tenure recommendations for you. We also have the approval of our minutes. This is from our regular meeting on April the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. We have the first reading of the following policies, Policy Two-two-one-zero, that's on curriculum development. Policy Five-four-one-zero, promotion, placement, and retention. And finally, we have the consideration of the approval of a resolution for a cooperative educational program agreement between Livonia Public Schools and Plymouth Canton Community Schools. This is for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As you recall, this is our agreement that we enter into annually that allows our students to take courses through their CTE program.
Thank you. Before I call for a roll call vote, is there anyone that would like any of these consent agenda items moved?
I've already asked one.
Thank you. Alright, so all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes four zero. Doctor, Dr. Matthew Yun, please walk us through.
I would, I would, I have the pleasure of recommending Alexander Nor- Noratian become the new principal of Discovery Middle School. He has served in that capacity for most of this year on an interim basis. And it is, it is a great thing for us to quote unquote grow our own. To have somebody that's been here, has put the years in here and be able to see him rise through the ranks. So Alex, one up. You get a big candy bar?
Yeah.
You're gonna set me on mine.
Good evening. I wanted to thank Dr. Merritt and her team for this incredible opportunity. I appreciate each and every one of you who has helped me throughout my journey. I am so humbled and honored to have the interim label removed and become the third principal at Discovery Middle School. I am so excited to continue working with the amazing staff at Discovery to continue to grow and develop what Principal Terry Sawchuck started. I'm ready to officially begin this new chapter and I'm excited to lead a building where students and staff are proud to call home. Thank you again. Have a great night and go Eagles.
Congratulations.
Another new hire who was on the ten.
Mr. Matthew Yun, you want to continue?
Yes. We have one other hire for today. Deborah, Deborah Stone was hired as a social worker. If you know anything about the current state of education, finding a social worker is like finding a nugget of gold somewhere. So she will be, so she will be splitting through Hoben and I this, it's this. Have to learn how the names are. They'll learn how to pronounce all the names here. So we welcome her to our family also. And the other side of this, so we acknowledged a new hire, so we have to also want to acknowledge some of the people that are retiring who put good time in with the district. So the first one is Timothy Kresinski. He's retiring as Director of Facilities and Capital Projects. From what I've been told, he's an integral part of the district and somebody that we, we don't know how we're going to fill that position, but we'll do our best to do so. Also, we have Marcia Lizio, who's been teaching at the district since nineteen eighty-five. Last at Salem in the forensic science department. We have Rick Schlaud, elementary classroom teacher at Bentley, who's been an employee since two thousand. Vicky Shuler, the executive assistant for specialized services. She has been an employee of the district since nineteen ninety-one. Susan Sorbeck, innovation period teacher at Holson, has been an employee since nineteen ninety-four. Marian Stevens, a nurse at Plymouth, who's been here since two thousand and six. And the last of our retirees is Noreen Watson, who's been an employee at the district since two thousand and seven. Those three give them all around across the next three years. We also have a tenure recommendation. Linda Noriann, who's retained a tenure at the district, and I have a few words written by her principal. Linda Noriann has served our PCCS community as a parent on PTO, including PTO president, peer professional, and classroom educator. Linda Noriann has most recently served as, it's this, I'm gonna keep saying, community as a fourth grade, second grade, and first grade classroom teacher. In all of these roles, Linda is seen daily with a smile on her face and a positive attitude. Linda understands the importance of partnering with families as a PCCS parent herself and the importance of the community involvement in our schools as an active community member. Linda's dedication to PCCS is commendable and it is an honor to present her recommendation for tenure. So let's give her a round of applause for reaching that list. That is it for Human Resources.
Thank you. I want to congratulate everyone. That is retiring, got tenure. I heard some sighs back here when they heard those names for retirement, so I know that you will be sorely missed. But thank you for your service and time. Alright, we are moving on to celebrating success and just happens to be me today, so. This evening, the Board of Education will once again celebrate our school community with a VIP award to a group of generous and truly amazing individuals from White Line Express. White Line Express Limited is a trucking company with headquarters in Plymouth, Michigan that provides exceptional service to their customers. White Line Express helped PCCS with the distribution of meals for the holidays that consisted of turkeys and many other food items so that our district neediest families were able to have comfortable and worry-free holiday with food on their tables. We are also fortunate to have had the opportunity to support our families and we could not have done this without our friends at White Line. At this time, I would like to invite Frank Rizzarello, Director of Partnerships and External Affairs, to say a few words.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just, it's important, I guess, to recognize this has been a longstanding partnership for the district. This is our eighth year. Our dear friend, the late Kristen Hennessy, began this partnership eight years ago with White Line Express. And you know, Kristen was always worried about everyone having enough food. It was always an important thing for her to make sure that people were fed in this community. And so I was happy to take that tradition on from her and now I'm happy to be working with Liz Vartanian Gibbs and her department, continuing the partnership. But it doesn't happen without White Line Express. How it starts, and the holidays usually around Thanksgiving, we start identifying families and that comes from a number of places, including our principals who identify families from their buildings that have need. Of course, Liz and her team know of those families as well as Kim May and the McKenna Vento families. So we identify those folks and, and we, we communicate with them, let them know what we have for them and ask if they've been interested for the holidays if we can provide that food for them. White Line and their wonderful staff packages everything. All the traditional holiday sides, they put in a big bag for us as well as a nine-pound turkey. Then our maintenance department goes over to the warehouse, picks everything up, brings it over to Plymouth High School where our food service folks store all of that for us until we set up distribution. And the families really have kind of a, they drive up and Liz and her team and some folks from our team place those things right into their car for them, wish them a happy holiday and send them on their way. We serviced sixty families in the community this year and we were outside in the cold for three days. But we didn't mind doing it. It was a great way to start the holiday season and important to us and important to the district. And again, none of this happens without White Line, a great partner. And I'll turn it back to you so that you can bring them forward and present your work.
Thank you for sharing that background. On, well, can you come on up? On behalf of the Board of Education, I present White Line Express and its wonderful employees with a Volunteer in Public Schools VIP Award. The White Line team of dedicated employees spent their time and resources to support Plymouth Canton Community Schools and it is truly appreciated. And now I would like to invite Sarah Blake to say a few words.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for this honor on behalf of White Line. We enjoy doing this, but we also are excited. I know originally we said fifty families. We raised it to sixty. We were so elated to hear that you had space for those, you know, for the meals to go somewhere. And we just really enjoyed reaching out to the community and we look forward to continuing this and hopefully growing from it in any way that we can, just partnering with you to make this happen. Thank you so much for this.
And I just want to say there are a little bit of technical difficulties, so you may be hearing a beeping noise in the back. So Mark is trying to get that fixed, so please be patient with us. Excuse me for one minute while we get pictures and I'm going to ask Christine McCoyn to move on with the board committee updates.
Alright, so we're going to skip SPA for right now. We'll come back. So the next one is Policy Committee and that's my committee. We have not met since the last board meeting. We will be meeting in two weeks on May twenty-eighth, five-thirty. We meet in the collaboration space down the end of the hallway. Everybody is welcome to attend. We did have some new business from our last meeting that we did not get to. So we will be bringing that back. We usually have a pretty packed agenda and everybody is welcome. The committee would like to have you there and our regular attender, Mr. Johnson, would also like to have people sitting with him.
Oh, perfect timing. Let's go on to the Student Performance and Achievement Committee update. We met on May one and we had two items that we dug into. The first one was the middle school grading policies and we got an update with regard to some of the pilot programs that were happening within the school to give teachers flexibility. Based on the data collected, they made some tweaks and adjustments for the next school year. I applaud the team of teachers, students, families that shared their input and to make sure that we are making the best decisions on behalf of kids. The next item that we discussed was a board policy, twenty-three forty, the field trips and overnight travel. And this came out of a policy with Chairperson McCoyn with her policy team to talk about what, why there is a need for such a policy. And we discussed the need primarily dealing with travel that's outside the U.S. and looking at liability, safety, and security on behalf of kids. And for teachers, all of your requirements are outlined within the administrative guidelines. So I know there was some confusion in the past with teachers. People were asking who does what. So we create the policy that's just general with regard to the safety, security measures that are in place from the board perspective. But Dr. Merritt has the administrative guidelines which outline what teachers need to do. So hopefully that's clear. Now we'll be moving back to policy for another review and then back to us for a full vote. Alright, next up is Finance and Operations.
So we met last Thursday, May ninth, here in this room and we reviewed the third stadium that's being constructed right now at the PSEP property. And we got the renderings of that finished location and that process because the original design had the, the innovation space as part of that building. And as we move that now to Canton as part of the CTE wing, there's new renderings available to show how that finished base will look. So we're really excited about the progress that's being made with that construction and how that, that project is coming along. We also reviewed two purchases that will be on the agenda this evening. One for desktop computers and monitors for the computer labs as well as the second one for classroom document cameras. Finally, we reviewed the March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four financial statements. And we had a relatively early evening for F and O. Our next F and O meeting is at five PM next Thursday, May twenty-third, but it is at a different location. So for those of you that come regularly, it's going to be at Salem High School to allow the members of the, the boards that are on the F and O committee to attend the Starkweather graduation that evening.
Thank you. Alright, our next committee update is Student Voice in Action and both Josh and Sai cannot be here today. And I was not at the last meeting, so I can't give you an update, but Dr. Liz, could you provide an update?
At, at the last meeting, we just gathered together and did a review of everything we are doing. It was not an official meeting because we did not have a board member present, but we are ready for our next meeting on Monday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, where we are going to review our feedback for the dress code and think about initiatives for next school year. Thank you. You're welcome.
I was in the meeting, two meetings before that, and I want to applaud the students that are part of SVA as they talk about expanding lunch options to make sure all student needs are, that are considered and also making lunch more flexible so students aren't waiting in line as longer. So they're, they've come up with a lot of great ideas that they are moving forward with and they're also giving suggestions for the dress code policy. So thank you to the students who are serving on that and bringing forward those great ideas. I do want to back up and tell you about a slight change for the Student Performance and Achievement Committee. It was originally scheduled for June fifth, but we've had to change it to June third due to Beth not being able to make June fifth. So June third is a Monday. We will meet here in this room from five to seven PM. And we will also make sure that it gets posted on the agenda with the correct time, date, and location. Alright, okay, moving on to, oh, yes.
Jill, just a question for you because I mentioned moving the, the meeting to the Starkweather graduation and Judy correctly informed me that the Starkweather graduation is actually the following F and O meeting. It's on the June sixth one that we have. However, there is the Honors Night that is on May twenty-third. So is it possible for us to still?
Not May twenty-third.
It isn't, is it? There's three honors nights.
Oh, okay, maybe that's it.
It is.
I think there's one on, on May twenty-third.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
You're right, you're right. Okay.
So is it?
Wrong, right, yeah.
Okay.
I forget.
Is it still possible for us to move this to Salem so that we could attend the Honors Night? I'm actually going to be out of town on the Tuesday and Wednesday, so I can't attend any of the Honors Nights and I would love to be able to participate in the one at Salem.
We'll make every accommodation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it still will be at Salem, but it's for a different reason.
Glad we got that cleared up.
Thank you, Judy.
We'll make sure those rooms are available. Thank you.
I was sitting here panicking thinking.
No, I, yeah, absolutely. Just lots of conflicting things, so.
We are going to move on to administrative reports and recommendations with Dr. Merritt.
Thank you so much. If you'll indulge me, I know I usually spend quite a bit of time amplifying the accomplishments of our students and staff. And I tell you, this has been an incredible year because they keep, just keep thriving, is the best way that I can say it. So I got quite a few accomplishments to share. Today, I was so excited to share with our staff as well as our school community that Canton High School, Plymouth High School, and Salem High School are all named in the top fifty best high schools in Michigan and the top five percent of all public high schools in the United States. And this is according to the U.S. News and World Report rankings. They were released in April. Plymouth is ranked number twenty-sixth, Salem is number twenty-nine, and Canton is thirty-first. And these rankings are, they survey over eleven hundred high schools in the state of Michigan and twenty-five thousand nationwide. So we just want to share, show our appreciation to our teachers, our staff, our administrators for the tremendous things that they do to provide our students with a world-class education that really helps them learn, prepare, and thrive. And we are, please join me in congratulating our students for their hard work. As we talk about our teachers, it's really appropriate that we celebrate them as well. Last week, it was National Teachers Appreciation Week. The board was able to give a proclamation for the teachers on our previous board meeting. We also had a resolution that was offered to us by Wayne Risa in honor of our teachers. And when you look at Teacher Appreciation Week and the history behind it, its roots trace back decades to First Lady Eleanor Roosevelt and highlights the contributions of teachers nationwide. We had events across the schools, across the district, and they were able to spotlight the work of our teachers and everything they do to help our students succeed. In addition to Teachers Appreciation Week, we also recognize our nurses. They had Nurses Appreciation Day and we are so thankful and grateful for the work that they do to ensure that our students are safe and prepared for learning. As we continue to think about this appreciation on behalf of PCEF, please join us in honoring our teachers and staff by donating to the PCEF's Think a Teacher, Salute a Staff campaign. Each twenty-five dollar donation will award honorees with a personalized certificate of appreciation, recognition on PCEF's social media accounts, and entry into a drawing for a fifty-dollar target gift card. Information on how to donate is available on PCEF's Facebook page. Some additional exciting news to share. I think we had a press release going out today about Ford Motor's car show. This is in honor of our outstanding PCEP Auto Tech program. They had this career and technical education program were on display recently when Ford Motor Company held an event on campus. You have the pictures there. In addition to bringing some of Ford's newest vehicles to PSEP, the show spotlighted an electric vehicle that PCS students built from scratch over this past school year and a student-built hot rod. As part of this event, Blackwell Ford and Bill Brown Ford donated to twenty-twenty Ford Mustangs, twenty-twenty four Ford Mustangs and a twenty-twenty-two Bronco Raptor to PCCS's auto program. PCCS is the first school district in Michigan with a full-fledged EV auto program and PCCS also offers auto classes geared specifically for female students. Ford networked with our students in the, in our highly regarded auto tech program. They discussed career pathways and encouraged our students to get jobs in local Ford dealerships. So that was a wonderful event. This was actually, we had media coverage from Channel Two, Channel Four, Channel Seven, and we had several publications as well. It was shared with me as well today by one of our staff members that our students also wrote an article about this in The Perspective. This was Donna Gatski shared that our students wrote an article about this in The Perspective. So that's really rare that we have that much coverage, but it's something that we are very proud of. As we continue to talk about the honors of our students, as we just heard, I'd like to invite all board members to join us as we celebrate the achievements of the class of twenty-twenty-four when PCEP hosts its annual Honors Night. Plymouth will hold its Honors Night on Tuesday, May the twenty-first. Canton will take place on Wednesday, the twenty-second, and Salem will take place on Thursday, the twenty-third. And of course, did I mess it up?
The logo's mixed up.
The logo's already mixed up. See if you're paying attention. The night will highlight academic excellence, scholarships, and athletic and extracurricular activity successes. I also want to invite the community to join us for the annual PCCS K-12 art show that's going to take place this Saturday. That'll be from eleven-thirty to three-thirty and that will take place in the Salem High School cafeteria. If this event, if you haven't been to that, please come out and see the talent of our young students. These are from all grade levels, from kindergarten through twelfth grade, and they're able to present their pieces. And there's a celebrity judging contest, so we can award our, our students for their accomplishments. The accolades continue as we celebrate East for their Science Olympiad program. They win the, they won the state championship. They, I got a little confused in here. That took place at Western Michigan University earlier this month. I know we've talked about them in competition all along, but they were successful. The teams win qualified them for the National Science Olympiad competition, which will be held this year at Michigan State University. The national competition will see East compete against one hundred and twenty of the best teams around the country for the chance to win prizes and scholarships. That's a great accomplishment. Something we're really proud of is our PCCS esports program. That's a new program to our district. We want to congratulate our team member Luke Meyer for his success at the recent Michigan High School's Esports League's playoff. Meyer was named an Ultimate All-State Award winner in the Super Smash Brothers video campaign competition. Congratulations also to all East, I'm sorry, all Plymouth esports team members on their hard work for the season and growing competitive video games community. Also, we want to thank Pioneer Middle School and congratulate their esports team. They also earned recognition in the middle school division with the finals win in the Super Smash Brothers event. So just, this program is really taking up for our students and they're doing an amazing job. We're not surprised. Wanted to salute the student staff and the community volunteers who made this year's SJ five K a resounding success. This year's race benefited six local families who are facing financial hardships due to medical issues. We had an amazing turnout and this helped this year's event raise thousands of dollars for our beneficiary families. The success of this race is a shining example of the power of the Plymouth Canton community to help our families in need. So just want to thank everyone for your participation. And the accolades continue. PCCS middle school students advanced in National Civics B. We have three PCCS middle school students, Rewan Hamad from Discovery Middle School, Simon Reed from West Middle School, and even Zen, Evan Zen from East. They put their civic knowledge on display at the local finals of the twenty-twenty-four National Civics B. Wes, Zen, and Hamad advanced to the state. Wes, Zen, and Hamad advanced to the state championship for a chance to advance to the national finals. All three students will also receive a prize from the Canton Chamber of Commerce, and their social studies classes will receive a pizza party to celebrate their successes. PCEP Video Production Students, they win in a creative contest. This is under the leadership and guidance of our own Janet Sutherland. They added to their tradition of excellence recently when the students took home honors in this year's Courageous Persuaders Video Awards. The competition sees students produce public service messages about teens driving safely. Over 1,100 students from 34 states submitted videos to the contest with fewer than 20 videos receiving awards. PCEP students receiving awards included junior Tamaki Amani and seniors Elizabeth Kelly, Cara Corbett, Annie Fitzgerald, Samara Hefman, and Ellison Roper. Plymouth teacher Janet Sutherland received the Courageous Leader Award given to a staff member for their commitment to spreading the word about teens driving safely. And finally, this evening, please join me in congratulating our trustees Anupam Tadu and Patty McCoyn for being recognized for their outstanding achievements in the Michigan Associations of School Boards. They were both presented with awards on April the 25th. I want to thank both member McCoyn and Tadu for their efforts to serve our district and celebrate their recognition on the statewide level. Congratulations. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. I think all that you said deserves a big round of applause. Every single one of those items. It's amazing. Great work by students and staff. All right, we are now moving on to D2, Student Services and Security with Kurt.
Thank you. I'm pleased to welcome our Director of School Safety and Security, Josh Meyer, who will be presenting updates to what we've been doing in the areas of safety and security over the last few years. And, and as it relates to our Dynamic Plan items, B and E. So I'll turn it over to Josh, and at the end of his presentation, you'll have an opportunity to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know how to work this thing first before we get going. All right, so I want to present tonight some of the updates that we made in the area of safety and security across our district. It's been quite a busy two years for our department. We've made some significant investments, significant improvements, all with a focus of enhancing safety for our students so that they can, you know, have a safe learning environment. So first, we'll talk a little bit about our structure. Since I came on board with the district, we've made some, some pretty vast changes to our organizational structure. We had a significantly difficult time filling some of our vacant part-time positions, and so we were able to restructure, eliminating some part-time positions, turning those, you know, combining like four positions into one full-time, which has allowed us to have 13-day shift personnel, three full-time afternoon shift personnel, and one midnight shift personnel. And that, that has positioned us to allow for staggered coverage throughout the day. Our focus is to have the most amount of coverage during the school day. But now we're able to stagger those shifts so that we can minimize the need for overtime and the need to bring, you know, take an afternoon person and put them on a day shift so we can maintain that afternoon shift coverage for special events. It's also positioned us very well to provide security services and safety services throughout the district. So previous, our, our, our security shifts were assigned to PSEP. They stayed at PSEP. Now we're able to take those and move them to, if we have a middle school that has an actual fire alarm, we now dispatch personnel to that school to assist the principals in evacuation and, and keeping order and then getting students back into the building safely. So those improvements have enhanced our, our operational efficiencies quite, quite well. As Kurt mentioned, our goals for the dynamic, what we align with, with the Dynamic Plan is goal number B. All PCS students and staff report they feel physically, psychologically, and emotionally safe and represented at school. It's our philosophy. If we can make students feel safe while they're in the building, then that enhances their learning opportunities and gives them a better chance of success while they're at school. If they're constantly focused on safety and well-being, that makes it difficult for kids to learn. And so our, our focus is, is really been to try to proactively address some of the safety concerns, listening to what, some of the things that are concerning to our students and to our staff and building programs that will help that. We also align with PCS, goal number E. PCS will be recognized as a leader and innovator in student learning and growth. We'll talk about that towards the end. We have had quite an outreach from school districts across the country in the last year, asking us what we're doing. They're hearing about it, and they're asking us, and they're wanting to model some of the things that we're doing here at PCS. So that, that puts us in that leader in our, in our category. As far as the logic model, our three goals that we focus on, our prevention, rest, I'm sorry, prevention, response, and recovery. Prevention is our first and foremost focus. We want to be able to prevent things from occurring within our schools. And then we want to work on response. We can't prevent everything from happening, so we want to have a robust response system in place to be able to handle those. And then obviously, anytime there's a lockdown or any type of situation, we have to be prepared to recover from that incident. So I won't spend a lot, talking, what's most important on our logic model are our outcomes. We want to focus on our outcomes, but everything prior to that leads into having successful outcomes. So our outcomes are, number one, we want to reduce the number of incidences that occur within our schools. I would be a happy man if I never had to live through another lockdown in my career here. So we focus on trying to prevent things from occurring, trying to prevent incidences within our building. And then we want to improve our operational efficiencies when it comes to response. We want to build a robust response system. We want to take that work, what historically was handled by building administrators and principals, and put that on our safety, security teams, and build systems within, within our buildings to handle those emergencies so that our, our principals and our administrative staff can focus on keeping students safe and then keeping themselves safe when they're navigating through an emergency. And then, of course, we want to increase the sense of safety and well-being for our students, again, contributing to that positive learning environment that we strive for. And then finally, we learned after the lockdown in 2021 following the Oxford Incident that we really had to start building relationships with our community and focusing on building trust. Parents send their kids to school. We want the parents to trust that we're going to do everything in our power to keep their kids safe while they're at school. So we've worked really hard through community forums and other measures to build that trust and build that, build those relationships with our community before an incident occurs. So one of the largest things that we've, one of the biggest enhancements we've done since 2021 is building our Security Operations Center. And so that is housed at PSEP, the capabilities of our Security Operations Center. So if you can picture a kind of a dispatch center with a bunch of screens on the wall, radio communications, the biggest, the capabilities that exist within that room. We have an operator that works full-time during our day shift and an operator that works full-time during our afternoon shift. We have capabilities of monitoring all of our cameras across the district. Our focus is on entry points in critical areas within the district. And so if we're not able to monitor every camera, we have close to 1,600 cameras across the district. And so our focus is really on monitoring those entry points, particularly at PSEP because we have students transitioning and doors unlocking throughout the day. So that, that focus becomes on monitoring those entry points during those critical times of the day. Building access controls, we're able to control all of the building access points throughout the district, that any building from that room remotely. That includes being able to program doors open, unlock doors, and also lock down a building if we needed to. This year, we added a building lockdown monitoring system. So now what happened before is if a building went into lockdown, a principal would have to make a PA announcement, would have to call the Security Operations Center, would have to call the police, would have to do all those things. And so one of the things we learned from studying some of the incidents, including the Oxford Report, is how critical our camera systems can become in, in the response to an incident. So now when a lockdown button is activated in a building, our Security Operations Center gets an automated alert, and all of that, all of that building's cameras pre-populate on our screen. So now we're able to provide real-time information to responding law enforcement in those critical incidences. We monitor all 911 calls that go, that come in from the district. So, excuse me, if you call 911 from a building, we get an alert within the Security Operations Center. We're then able to contact that building and see what resources they need and if they're, if they have any needs at that time. We do all radio communications and dispatching of security personnel from the Security Operations Center, and we're monitoring our, our transportation GPS location and transportation radios during the arrival and dismissal hour. So if there's an emergency on a bus, we're able to communicate with the bus. We're able to look at the GPS location and relay that information to our law enforcement and, and first responder partners. Emergency callback answering points, and I'm sorry I'm going fast. We just got a lot to cover. We added through a grant, we added eight emergency call boxes. Those are the towers you see a lot at college campuses to our, our PSEP park. They're a two-button system, so one button alerts our Security Operations Center. That would be if you had something that wasn't necessarily a drastic emergency where you need 911. Maybe you needed directions. Maybe you're, you're out at the park and you're confused where, which baseball field is you're going to. You could push that button, and somebody in the Security Operations Center would be able to provide that information to you. And then the second button is a direct answer to the 911 center within the camp police department. Our staff has a weather monitoring system within, within the Security Operations Center where we're monitoring all weather events and critical incidences that may be occurring locally so that we can take proactive and preventative measures should we have to within our district. Focus of Attention is something new we added this year. As I said, we can't be everywhere. We can't see everything. And so we programmed our system to monitor certain points. We programmed our system to alert us when doors are left open. If there's a, there's a switch on a door, if a door is left open, we can get an alert so that we can address that. We have certain areas of the campus at PSEP where we don't want vehicles driving during the day because we have kids transitioning behind schools. So we programmed our cameras to alert us if it senses a vehicle between the hours of 6:30 and 2:30. That way, we know that there's a vehicle approaching that, and we can address that. So Focus of Attention has been, has been a huge, we're tying all of our sensors, our vape sensors, our gunshot detection sensors. All of that will be tied into Focus of Attention to give our operator real-time alerts in the event of an emergency. Safe Visitor is our, our visitor management system that we added this year. So those are kiosks that will be located in the secure vestibules of all buildings. Anytime there is a prohibited visitor or there's a situation that comes up on the kiosk, our Security Operations Center is alerted to that. Typically, a building-level administrator can handle those situations, but we're alerted in the event that they need assistance, and we're able to provide that. The things that we're working on right now, the biggest, one of our, my biggest goal is to see through is following the Michigan State Incident, we saw an individual walk into a building. That camera captured that person walk into a building, produce a firearm. Nobody was monitoring those cameras at the time. There was no alert that went out. So in, in real time, what happened is shots were fired before that police department was notified. It's a game changer for us if we can identify these incidences before they happen. If somebody produces a firearm, how can we know about it before that first shot is fired? So we're one of two school districts in the entire country that has partnered with Motorola on a visible weapon detection monitoring system that will be deployed through our camera system. What it's doing is it's telling the camera to, to look for objects that are similar to a firearm, and that, that alert will alert our Security Operations Center. Well, they will then see the video and validate that as a firearm and then follow our response protocol measures to, to address that situation. We're really excited about it. It'll be up and operational by the summer where we're going to work with the camp police department to do several tests to validate and verify the, the working of the system and work with Motorola engineers to, to critique it and refine it. Through the use of 97 grant funds, we added a gunshot detection system. This is part of our response model. Again, we want to try to prevent things as best as we can, but we also know that we have to be prepared to respond. And so the gunshot detection sensor, our sensors, they're located strategically within all of our buildings, and they're, they're designed to detect fired gunshots. And then also, there's a camera feed that, that automatically responds and produces a video of, of that area when that gunshot is detected. So we're then able to take that quick video, quickly deploy it to responding law enforcement officers so they have a real-time image and video of somebody should they fire a shot within one of our buildings. Obviously, our hope is that that never occurs, but again, we want to prepare ourselves for, for the worst and be able to respond to it. And then the, the other piece that we're working on, this was, this was something we learned at the 2021 lockdown is communication is critical within our first responder and law enforcement partners. In the school district, we did not have interoperable communications. We were relying on cell phones. So with the, with the new radio system that we're deploying, we're going to be able to have integration where we can patch radio channels together so that we can actually talk with our law enforcement partners on their walkie-talkie radios or our, our mobile radios. So we can have that interoperable communication in an emergency, something that's, that's very critical for us. District radio system, so we've been hard at work at upgrading all of the radios across our district. So to date, we've deployed not 696 mobile and portable radios across 28 buildings, and this includes 58 individually licensed FCC channels. So that's a, if you know anything about programming radios and deploying radios, that's a heavy lift. We replaced the repeater and multiplex system at PSEP, so this allows us to have extended range on our radios and extended in-building coverage at, at the campus. And then the next phase is we'll be deploying 141 mobile bus radios and a dispatch console for our Transportation Department. These new bus radios will also have a, what we call a panic button on the radio where the bus driver can push that and silently alert our Security Operations Center should there be an emergency on the bus where they can't gain the radio. If they're driving down the road and something happens, they can reach up and push that button, and we get an automatic notification and GPS location of that bus. AVTEC Dispatch Council is something that the board recently approved to add to our Security Operations Center. That is basically taking a radio and turning it into a computer. And that gives us that interoperable communications where we can drag and drop radio channels on the screen of the computer and thus patching those radio channels together in an emergency. And it also allows our Security Operations Center to monitor all district radios from within the Security Operations Center. So how did this all come about? It all came about through the, through doing security assessments. Eric, my manager, and I started with a, developed our own system for doing safety and security assessments across the district. And on the summer months, when, when we're, we have a little bit of downtime, we go into all the buildings and we look at entry points. We look at parking lots. We look at all different types of things, and we have a, we have a schematic that we fill out to complete. So that helps us make decisions on what improvements need to be made across the district. Last year, through the use of state grant funds, we were able to use Secure Education Consultants, a third-party vendor, to come in and do a security assessment of every single building. Their findings were very consistent with what we already had found. And we've since been able to take 97 and soon 31AA funds to address the, the findings that we found in those assessments to make our schools safer. Throughout this process, every change we make, everything we do requires us to look at our policies and procedures across the district and make improvements to address those security concerns. If we add, if we add a system that locks doors, we have to look at our access control policy. We add a visitor management system, we have to address our visitor management policy within the district. And so those are constant things that we're looking, and we're upgrading throughout the year as we add things to our buildings. Emergency Operation Plan Updates, this is required by Public Act. Every two years, the district has to update its Emergency Operations Plan. It's currently about an eight-inch-thick, three-ring binder. This year is going to be a heavy lift for us as we are required to redo that entire Emergency Operations Plan. And we now have to include all of these enhancements that we've made within the district, included into our operations plan and have that submitted to the state of Michigan by the end of the year. So that's going to be a heavy lift for my team and I. That also requires us to redo every building emergency operations plan as well, and we'll talk about how we're going to incorporate that into some of our systems. So then through the use of grant funds, we've been able to secure eight emergency, Code Blue emergency call boxes. It looks similar to the blue tower on the side, only ours are black towers to match the kind of the signs and stuff that were already existing at the park. We funded the radio projects that we talked about, Access Point Lockdown Emergency Light. So when we activate a lockdown, our law enforcement and first responder partners have card access to our buildings, and they have mechanical key access to our buildings. They're coming in there. They're coming in there as an emergent. They're trying to get there quick, and they're trying to figure out what door can I get into. So now what we've done is we put a blue light above all of the doors that would be access points for police officers and first responders when a lockdown is activated. Now, when I hit that lockdown button and I lock that building down, that, that beacon starts to flash, alerting our first responders and officers, but that's an entry point for them in an emergency. Gunshot Detection System, again, this is deployed through every building in the district. Crisis Go Emergency Management System. So this takes our Emergency Operation Plan, and it puts it on an app on your phone. It allows our staff to, to report a lockdown directly from their cellphone. If they, if they choose to download the app, we've also put it on all district devices so they could do it from the computer in their classroom, or if they choose to download the app, they can do it. The most critical thing that we learned in the 2021 lockdown is we, we did not have enough communication with staff in real time. Crisis Go gives us that ability. It gives us the ability to have two-way communication with staff. It gives us the ability to put out quick, quick notifications to staff. It also gives staff the ability through the app, it's tied in with our MyStar Student System. So it also gives staff the ability to get a roster to which they can take attendance and account for students in an emergency. We also took all of our action plans, so. We also took all of our action plans, so what was what was contained in a piece of paper in the classroom that explained to staff what they needed to do during a lockdown or doing an emergency, and now puts it into a checklist through Crisis Go. So they can actually check off what they, when they've done those things, and then we get an alert in our Operations Center that that's been checked off and assigned. If they do the roster and they're missing a student, we get a real time notification that there's a student missing. And that gives us the opportunity to proactively start looking for that student, or maybe they're in another classroom. So Crisis Go is something that we're we're just now deploying. I'm incredibly excited about it. I think it's going to add another layer of protection to our staff. They can, you know, again, right from your cellphone, you could lock a building down in in an emergency. That that would have taken you dialing two two, an emergency number, getting the Security Operations Center. They have to then notify the principal over the radio and then lock the building down, so it saves time in an emergency. And then the visitor management system we talked about, again, all of our visitors are now going to go through that kiosk and be screened before we allow them in the building. It keeps a record of what visitors are in the building, so if we do have an emergency, I can now look at the visitor management system and determine how many visitors are in a building that we need to address in an emergency. We did some vehicle replacements through the grant funds, security window protection film. The board, I think, is going to talk about that later tonight. We're we're optimistic to get started on that project. PA system standardization upgrades. Before this project, we had multituded different PA systems throughout the district, some as old as the seventies. Through work with technology, we were able to upgrade and standardize all of our PA systems across the district. This is now allowed where if you pushed a lockdown button, you would have to go make a manual PA announcement. Now you push a lockdown button, it automatically makes an announcement to our staff and to our students. So no longer do you have to make that manual notification. The system takes that over and gives our administrators time to adjust their students and keep themselves safe and make sure their building is locked down. Liberty Middle School had a complete camera overhaul, so all of their cameras across the entire middle school were replaced under the grant funds. We added radar signs, as the board is aware, we discussed this. We had speeds upwards of seventy one miles per hour at Plymouth High School along the drive. The average speed along Plymouth Drive was forty two miles an hour. So we had to take some measures. As you come across that Plymouth Drive, you're crossing right in front of a three different crosswalks that cross over to the JV Stadium. And we had a lot of near accidents because as it gets dark or as the sun blocks your view, you're not able to see people crossing. So we took those measures, put in some radar signs and some speed bumps to address those speed concerns. We focused through use of ninety sevens to take a look at some of our exterior camera coverage and particularly in parking lots and other areas to add cameras where we had gaps that were identified through our assessments. And then we utilized the Critical Response Group. This is a a group that did some detailed mapping covered under grant funds where it now takes and grids out your maps. We can incorporate all of those into our Crisis Go system, so you get a map of the building and grid. So as I'm telling, you know, and if we look again, looking back on the twenty twenty one lockdown, we had a multitude of agencies from as far away as Ohio showing up and we started assigning them into task force to go into the building and start doing what we asked them to do. If I'm taking a police officer who's never been in the building and I tell him, I need you to go check out B Pod, he's looking at me like, what are you talking about? So now I look at him and I say, you're assigned G two, and I hand him a map. Everybody knows I say G, I go to two, and that's the grid that I'm now responsible for. So it's going to enhance our capabilities as we go forward. Through the use of thirty one AA funds, that's another grant that we got this year, we're going to prioritize the funding. And we're going to look to cover some current salaried positions with the use of that grant funds. We've already ordered and and it's working on installing the AVTEC radio integration. And then as we start to look at some of our after school activities and some of the things that have happened recently, last year at the football game, we had a gun scare. So we've had some incidences occur. We were trying to look at ways to address some of our after school activities. And so we partnered with Evolve and we're looking to deploy a mobile weapon detection system that is mobile. We can take it, we can move it around. It's pictured there. If you attended the recent draft, Evolve was down there. You had to walk through Evolve before you walked into the draft. It's at Hart Plaza during the fireworks. But what it is, is it's very similar to a metal detector with the exception of you don't have to take your belt off, you don't have to take all these things off and put it in a bucket. You actually walk through and it's it's similar to a body scanner but less evasive, where it's looking for for weapons. So we're looking to purchase two of those that we would be able to deploy at football games, basketball games, other after school activities to try to keep those and make them a little bit safer. Access Control Upgrades, we're looking to add additional access control points across the district. Building Entry Intercoms, so the intercoms that our office staff is using to allow staff, people into the building throughout the day are at their life expectancy. And we can't even get parts for many of them anymore. So we're looking to replace all of those with a more robust system that ties right into our Vigilant Camera System and our and our Security Operations Center. And then Mechanical Lock Replacements and Upgrades, many of our buildings are keyed differently. So we're looking to rekey a lot of our buildings and go to a standardized system so that in an emergency, I don't have to fumble through a key ring of fifty keys. I've got five master keys for the entire district that I can use to get into buildings as needed. And then again, camera replacements, we'll look to add additional sensors and cameras with whatever funds we have available left after those previously mentioned projects. Threat Assessments and Alice Training, we spent a considerable amount of time following the Oxford Incident where we received probably a hundred threats in a short period of time that we had to decipher through and categorize them and investigate them. So the district has adopted CSTAG Model, the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guideline. We spent a considerable amount of work with Kathy Grotes and the members of our our district to train a hundred and thirty employees in in administering that threat assessment. We adopted a Building Crisis Response Team, so no longer is it a principal feeling like they're on their own. They have a Building Crisis Response Team with a mental health professional and several other trained members to assess these threats and quickly get these students addressed and and address the concerns. And then we have a District Crisis Response Team that's able to support those building teams as needed. And then, of course, my Safety and Security Team provides support and after hours coverage and works with law enforcement as the liaison to the buildings to assist as needed. Continuing on with the Alice Training, so we embrace Alice. Eric, Eric, my security manager, is an Alice instructor. So he has been very busy going to buildings and conducting refresher training. We're we're able to offer that to new hires through Human Resources. And then again, he covers barricading techniques, safety and, you know, safety and security personnel were going to those buildings when they're doing their drills and offering that assistance. And then we do do, continue to do annual training with our law enforcement partners. That's every summer where we work on and we discuss active shooter response techniques. And we actually do live drills to test our capabilities and see where we're at and then debrief that to see where we can improve. Our K nine program has been tremendously successful. We've deployed our K nine Echo to a multitude of incidences, including a bomb threat, a search of a parking lot for a weapon. We've deployed them to two other school districts in Wayne County to assist during a lockdown and the search of a building. But more importantly, he's he's comforting to our students and we allow, you know, through his therapy efforts, he's in in the buildings every day walking around and we estimate that he has about sixty student or sixty positive student interactions every day. Whether that's from a student coming up and just wanting to pet the dog in the hallway or whether that's going to the counseling office for a kid in crisis and and being able to have that dog as a calming presence. But it's been tremendously successful having that dual role dog that we can deploy in an emergency. But every day when it's there, it serves that purpose to provide comfort to our students. Our law enforcement partners, as the board knows, we just, we recently partnered with Plymouth Township Police Department to add a school resource officer. That has proved to be tremendously successful. Officer Smitherman has done a great job. Recently, Plymouth Township through Officer Smitherman's work had fifty invitations to read the schools during during March Reading Month and they made it to all fifty schools. So between between Chief Naitel, I mean, even Chief Naitel was out reading the students, but between Chief Naitel and the officers of the department, they made sure that they didn't turn any building down that wanted or any classroom down that wanted that presence. And so those are positive student interactions that our law enforcement partners are having with students. Post COVID, we've seen a significant increase in parents driving their kids to school, so we have a lot of traffic related issues in and around our schools. So we partner with our law enforcement agencies to try to address those and keep our schools safe. Diversion Programs, so up until recently, Canton Township was the only police department that offered diversion program. Diversion Programs historically work through Growth Works. It offers a restorative opportunity for for minors that may be committed a crime, particularly misdemeanor level crimes where we're looking at substance abuse or possession of narcotics, vape products, things like that. It offers them diversion to where they don't have a criminal record, but they get treatment and they get resources to prevent so that hopefully they don't do that again. Plymouth Township has recently, and Plymouth City as well, now have diversion programs also through Growth Works. And those programs are are proven to be tremendously successful for a lot of our students that may find themselves in trouble. And then they're able to get that help through Growth Works. So Highlights and Future Projects, I talked about being an innovator. So some of the districts, some of the places that have reached out to our school district to inquire about some of the things and the best practices that we're now implementing within our district, Lincoln, Nebraska, Celine, Michigan, Belleville, Michigan, Osseo, Minnesota, Reading, California, Oakland County, and Wayne Risa have all reached out and either visited our Security Operations Center or have inquired about some of the things we're doing and and asked for, whether it be, you know, some have asked for our Threat Assessment Guideline model. Some of them have modeled that. We've recently had a school district in Wayne County that asked us to help them conduct a threat assessment because they weren't as prepared. And so Kathy Grotes, through her efforts, was able to help them do that threat assessment, risk assessment. We were recently featured by Motorola in a case study highlighting the proactive stance that we took following the lockdown and the improvements that the district has made post lockdown in areas to keep our kids safe. And then Future Projects, we continue to look at environmental design capabilities to enhance the school. We can put bollards up, we can put gates up. Those aren't aesthetically pleasing to anybody, much less our students. And so we look to where where we can put trees, where we can put environmental things to enhance those outdoor areas without putting up bollards and things of that nature. Continue to work on our system integration. So my goal is that everything has to integrate. We can't have silos, we can't have standalone systems. So if your system is a standalone system, it's not going to integrate with our PA system or with our Security Operations Center, I'm not interested in it. We want to be able to have those integrations and be able to have things be automated in times of emergency, so we're not relying on a human factor to do those. Emergency Operation Plan Rewrite, again, we're going to look to put that in a digital format so that it's available to our staff in a digital format. And then the biggest, a big heavy lift that we got to undertake is our reunification procedure. So reunification is where we, if we have an emergency and we have to relocate students away from the school, we have to have a reunification site where parents can pick those students up. Imagine taking a thousand plus students to a reunification site and individually, every time a parent shows up, I have to go on MyStar and verify if they're authorized to pick that student up, and then I have to keep a log of that. It's very time consuming. So what we're going to use through Crisis Go and the I Love You Guys Foundation is a new reunification model to where now if we have to take students away from campus to a reunification site, Crisis Go integrates in MyStar, the parents, the authorized parents that are in MyStar will get a, will get a text message alert, an SMS with the reunification site address and a QR code. When they arrive at the reunification site, we use a Motorola radio that also looks like a cellphone. It has a camera and a QR code scanner. We scan that QR code, it integrates in MyStar, it tells us that that parent is authorized. We then use the radio piece of that to call for a runner to bring that student up. We turn it over to the parent and it keeps a record and a log of who that student was turned over to and what time they were turned over to that parent. So that's that's something we'll be working on with that this summer. So a lot of things, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you for all of the detailed information. I will start with my right with member Westra if you would like to ask any questions.
I don't really have any questions, but I do have, I do want to say that this is fantastic. I know it's hard to think about the possibility that we might have another lockdown or or an actual crisis. But I'm glad that we're thinking about it and I'm glad that we're taking these steps.
So Josh, thank you so much for the super comprehensive presentation. I know it's a lot of detail and we oftentimes try to cut these meetings short, but this is really important information. I have a couple of questions. The first is around an event that we had at the high school, I guess it was two weeks ago. There was a lockdown there. Was it a lockdown or a shelter in place, I guess is?
It was a lockdown. It was a lockdown.
Okay, so my question really is around feedback that I received from my student as well as students that I know in the community as well as things I've seen in social media, in the consistency or inconsistency in terms of how that event was treated. Some teachers very much took all the training and all the things that you talked about in 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 place, you know, they barricaded their rooms, they did all kinds of things like that. Other teachers continued to educate. And I'm just wondering whether that was different because of the different schools they were at, or was it just, we need to do better education around this process?
Yeah, so we we always, we always want to go back and look at these incidences and find ways that we can improve. And this this incident was no different. It was a very short duration incident. We were able to quickly address it. But unfortunately, when the lockdown was called, there was a, there was a misunderstanding by one of the buildings and they put their building into shelter in place instead of lockdown, which then allow, in a shelter in place, you can continue educating, you can continue teaching, you can continue doing those things. We just don't want you. We want to minimize the traffic in the hallways and we don't allow anybody out of the building. And so that that has been addressed and it's been corrected. We've worked through that issue and I don't want to.
It helps to understand.
But we fixed that, we've addressed that.
It helps to understand the disparity in experiences that I heard in the process. Because my understanding is when we have those events, we we do it to all three schools. We wouldn't do it just to one school, correct?
Well, yes and no. We we have to look at the incident and we have to make a decision quickly. And so in this case, the information that was received by us is that it was an individual, they were armed with a rifle and they were walking towards a building. So in this case, we put all three buildings locked on lockdown because the direction that they were heading, we weren't sure whether they were going to go into Kent High School or Salem High School.
Okay, got it. Okay, so then the the next related question is, how do we update our students and our families better about this process? I know that this incident was resolved incredibly quickly. I mean, it was like less than twenty minutes between the time that I heard about it from my student to the time that the all clear message came through. But some of the communications to the families didn't go out for almost ten minutes. And that in and of itself, in a normal situation in in the past, wouldn't have been a big deal. But we see students with cell phones and all of them are contacting their parents or other people, asking for information about what's going on and what should they do. And there's a lot of fear associated with it. With these new programs that you're looking at, with Crisis Go, with any of these other things, is there ways that we can get a more proactive notification to the families and the students?
Yes, so Crisis Go has the capabilities of an opt in for both students and for families. And so the way that it would work is very similar to an Amber Alert. If I was to activate a lockdown under Crisis Go, Kurt's phone is going to go off, he can't turn the volume down. It works like an Amber Alert. It then gives that information. And so we can set that up and it's something we're looking at and working towards. We're right now trying to get, we're 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 very laser focused on getting our staff to download the apps and get involved so that we can get our staff covered first. And then next phase is reunification. The next phase will be to offer that as an opt in to our families. So if we put a building in lockdown, they would get a a very generic message that says, this school is in lockdown, please stand by. We'll put additional information out via that text. I'm never going to beat the student who's texting mom. It's just not going to happen.
I know.
My son, my son in the twenty twenty one lockdown texted my wife before I could call her and tell her what was occurring. When when I get there, my focus is on making sure that all of our procedures in place. And then we work with our communications team to get those communications out. But as you can imagine, we want to be very sensitive to the information we're putting out. Because we don't want families to panic more than is needed, but we also understand timeliness is very important. And so we are looking at Crisis Go to resolve some of those, some of those things with our families.
I heard parents that were getting in their car and driving to the school.
We had a lot of that. And then we're not going to stop that.
It's the wrong response.
It is, it very much is because we we lock up the roads and prevent our first responders from getting there. And it makes it very difficult to handle. We had a, we had some, some incidences in the parking lot with some with some parents that were somewhat unruly, and that takes our our direction away from trying to release this lockdown.
Yeah, so better communication can help with that process.
I agree.
Informing people. So I, I'm really excited to see you guys are thinking about these and this is part of the plans in terms of what you've got. I did have two other questions.
Can we come back? Let me just scroll around. Patty?
So I had a question about, it was when you were talking about the the app for teachers that would give them a roster. I feel like we're depending a lot on cell phones and I'm wondering what the backup plan for that is? Because I know during that one lockdown in twenty twenty one, there was problems with cell phones because so many people. with cellphones because so many people were using the bandwidth.
So, it has redundancies built in, it's also working on our Wi-Fi systems within the building. So, not only do we have it available through a cellphone app, we have it available on the actual desktop or laptop that's in the classroom that's working through, Mark Salzer would bear, would, would help me out here, I don't know what it's called, but it's the, it's the flux capacitor in the background that allows the internet to work.
Okay. Thank you. But I did want to say, I really appreciate this really comprehensive update, and I hope that members of the community who aren't here tonight are, can, you know, when this is up, they can access this, that you're taking a lot of proactive steps ahead of time. So, I really do appreciate it. And the idea of having the locks rekeyed so that you just have master keys, I unfortunately watched the documentary on Evolvi, and they couldn't find keys to the classrooms. That was really chilling to me. So, I really appreciate all your proactive measures and all the work you've done to keep our students safe. And I really liked where you talk about, they should feel safe, because that's really important to our students, too. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Josh?
Going back to consistency, I guess an example would be like, there were some teachers at, like, the same school where, like, one teacher would be barricading the door and the other one would be, like, refusing to barricade it. Like, that's another consistency issue, is like, some, like, everyone's texting each other, messaging each other, and one, one person's like, "Oh, my classroom's barricaded," and then someone else is like, "Oh, my classroom's just got the door locked." Like, that creates a whole nother layer of fear as well, and, like, students. So, like, how do you apply that consistency to, like, the classrooms level as well? I guess, if that makes sense? And is that something you're looking to?
Yeah. So, we've, we've provided the staff with training, we'll continue to provide that training at the request of building administrators. But again, going back to Crisis Go, if that staff member was to log into Crisis Go when that emergency gets activated, it gives them a checklist, and it tells them exactly what they should do, step by step, in that emergency. So, in a lockdown, it tells you, you need to turn the lights off, you need to lock and barricade your classroom door, and it goes through those procedures. And so, as we start to roll that out, we start to bring staff onboard, those inconsistencies, that is our goal, is to minimize those inconsistencies. So, right now, it's, it's contained in what we call a GO book. So, it's a, it's a piece of paper and a three-ring binder that should be in the classroom provided by the administrative staff. But that means they have to go through that three-ring binder, find that emergency, whereas now, it's going to show up automatically on their device or their computer.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I do have a question. What about substitutes? Will they be given the same training and the same access to Crisis Go?
So, training, so training becomes a little bit difficult because they're through edge of staff, and we, there's, there's quite a few of them, and there's a lot of turnover, et cetera. However, working with our technology department, next year, we're going to onboard a system to where a substitute teacher comes in in the morning, and when they get their key to the classroom, they're also going to get a, a document that gives them a QR code. When they scan that QR code, it gives them a login access to Crisis Go. So, if that emergency were to kick off while they're a substitute teacher, they would get those same alerts, and then after 24 hours, their access expires.
So, on the subject of master keys, obviously, that's good because you don't have the key ring, but it also creates a risk if those keys are, are left. My understanding is, is that we've largely have gone to a, a keyless entry?
Yes.
That those master keys are only used in the event of an emergency where there's no power or something like that, correct?
That's correct for exterior doors, but not for classroom doors. So, classroom doors are still a mechanical lock, mechanical key with a lock. And so, that's what we're focused on, more so, more so than not, is the interior doors and the classroom doors.
So, you'll still have individual keys that people will have that will, that, that won't be a master key. You're not going to have a thousand master keys
No.
Around the district. Okay. So, there's a really small number that you're going to contain.
Yes. And every building will still be keyed differently, but my master key will work at any building.
Okay.
So, if we do end up with a, we, we have to do a better job of key management. So, if we do have a, an issue where a key gets lost, we have, we'll have checks and balances in place to where we can change out those locks without impacting the whole district, if that makes sense.
That, that's really what I was looking for, is because that could get really expensive or very risky if, if a key gets lost.
Yeah. I'm hoping to leverage Tim before he leaves, because he's the expert in that arena.
You better move quickly. You better move really quickly. The last thing I wanted to mention is, is that I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into the relationship that we have with Canton Township and with Plymouth Township. I know that the City of Plymouth isn't likely to have a dedicated resource like we have at Plymouth Township or the resources that we have at Canton. But we have talked about wanting to get the same kind of agreement in place with the City of Plymouth, so at least the standards and the way we interact with those departments would be consistently applied. Has there been any progress on that front?
Yeah. So, we, we've had some early discussions with Chief Cox, he's not opposed to it.
Okay.
It's just a financial issue for him to be able to put school resource officers in. But I, I will say that out of all three of our agencies, they, they are, they are around, I mean, if you drive down Sheldon Road during Arrival and Dismissal at Weston and Byrd, you see Plymouth City cars quite a bit every morning, and so, he's very proactive and willing to have those conversations with the district.
Yeah, I understand that. We weren't looking to have a dedicated officer, but just, you know, just like we do with the townships, they have a consistency they apply even for the officers that are not dedicated to our schools.
Yeah.
And so, that would be a nice thing to have for, for all three of the major communities that are part of the district.
Yeah. He's not opposed to it. We shared Plymouth Township's agreement with them and, and had some conversations, preliminary conversations with them. It's, it's just probably, time-wise, we need to circle back around when things settle down a little bit in the district and have more time to do that.
Great. Thank you for all the proactivity and the innovation.
Thank you. Echo my board colleague sentiment with the regard to a thorough presentation, your broad view and perspective of how to keep all aspects of our community safe. I have a couple of questions I just want to ask. Did you talk about vape sensors? Did I hear that right?
Yes.
Okay. So, can you talk a little bit more about that in terms of where they're used and how?
So, so we have, it's, it's a multi, it's, it's, it's called a halo sensor, it's a multi-sensor, so it has the ability to, has the ability to detect vape, it has the ability to detect THC, it has the ability to detect gunshots, although not as sensitive as the other gunshot detection. But primarily, where we're using that is where we know we're having issues with vaping and, and the use of THC or marijuana. Bathrooms, things of that nature, where we can't put cameras. And so, those sensors will go in, and then we calibrate those sensors, and then the Security Operations Center will get an alert if that sensor detected any one of those 19 substances or issues.
That's one of the biggest things I hear from parents as I'm out in the community, and in fact, this past weekend, I had three moms talk to me about, you know, why isn't Plymouth-Canton doing enough with the vaping situation, given how many kids get involved with that? I don't have the numbers, this is all anecdotal information. And on top of all of the information you shared, it makes me wonder if there would be any benefit in doing a community forum to let families know all the things that we cover in terms of safety and security? Because I think there's just some guesses and maybe incorrect information with regard to we're not doing enough, and from what I'm hearing, there's a lot that we're doing, and perhaps families just are not aware of it. So, just putting that out there in terms of educating our families with regard to everything that you shared, giving them an opportunity to ask questions and letting them know that we are doing a lot with regard to vaping and some of the other issues that you talked Another question I have is, you talked about the gun detections. I know Eastern contracted with Zero Eyes, which is an AI gun detection, detection system. Is what you're talking about similar to that?
Yeah, it's very similar. The difference would be is that we're housing, we're keeping it all in-house with Zero Eyes, which we've looked into because there were grant funds available. I have to give a third-party vendor access to all of our cameras, they're located in another state. They then monitor our cameras. If an alert goes, they make that decision that it's a gun or it's not a gun, and then they alert the law enforcement. And so, when we looked at it from a cost perspective to a, being able to provide the service, we felt that partnering with Motorola and going the route that we are better serves our district and better serves our community, because we have that real-time connection with our three police agencies who are all onboard. We can provide that information much quicker to them, even, even including a video link of the suspect if need be, to where that officer responding has that picture and that video prior to versus using a third-party vendor to do that.
That helps.
Have the infrastructure in place, it's a matter of putting the software in place, beta-testing it, and then deploying it.
Thanks. You've done all your homework.
Thank you.
So, thanks for, for that. Makes sense. My last question is more around cyber threats. Does that fall under the work that you're doing? Or is that?
It's, it's, it's something I'm working on and having met much discussions with Mark Salzer and his team. He's taken the lead on it, but we are going to incorporate cyber threats and cybersecurity into our emergency plan update that gets done this year, because that's going to be a requirement going forward.
Okay. Those are all the questions that I have. Any other last-minute questions from, I hear, I see Josh?
Just one question is, I don't know if this is an option or if it would, like, go against, like, what we're trying to do with security and keeping it more private, but in some cases, where substitutes in the, in the latest lockdown, students took initiative, which I applaud them for doing so, and, like, barricaded the doors, locked all the doors, and figured out how to do that with the sub. And, like, is there a way to, if there is a sub or other, like, to educate students to do that, and like, because that was, I, I don't, like, do you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. So, we're looking at, so we're looking at, we've, we've reached out, we've talked with a, a company that's willing to do it, we're just working through some logistics right now, but what we're looking at is doing a video series for students, so that during a lockdown drill, this video, it could be a, a short three- or four- or five-minute video that talks about what a student's role is and what a student's responsibility is in a lockdown. We could then make a video series for parents, what is a parent's role in a lockdown, and then we can incorporate that for substitutes as well, so that it explains and walks them through what their role would be in a lockdown.
And then, one last thing, behavior problems during lockdowns, like, there's kids turning on flashlights on their phone or, like, yelling. How do you, like, after the fact, deal with that, and how can, like, teachers work, I guess, with that? Is there anything in place?
Yeah. So, so my department is, is, is not responsible for discipline, we, we can only do referrals. That's by design. So, disciplinary issues are handled by, by the deans at the park and the administrators. So, if we see an infraction of the student code of conduct, we write a referral, and then that's up to the administrators and the deans to address those behavior issues. It's also incumbent upon our staff to report those incidences so they can be addressed.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. We are moving on to item number three, Finance and Operations, with Jill.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair Sado. First on the list for your consideration this evening is approval of a resolution to purchase Piceup computer lab equipment. And without, our high school computer labs are refreshed on a regular cycle based on age and performance. And this evening, the, the proposal here is to be detailed here by Mark Salzer, our Director of Technology.
Thank you. And actually, just before I do that, I'll just share that tomorrow, we'll have half a dozen tech directors from Oakland and Wayne Counties coming to do a site, visit, site tour that Josh will be leading at, he didn't mention that because this has just been scheduled in the last week, but that's just another, you know, word's out that we're doing something pretty special there. And then, one more item, before I get to it, we are working on, we've already developed an incident response plan, we will be working, not just with Josh's team, but actually the other stakeholders, Business Office for continuity, a lot of places, a lot of people in this space to, to figure out how to best address what, what, what might happen if and when.
Great. Looking forward to it.
All right. So, tonight, thank you for entertaining me, we have first a resolution, we're looking to replace the equipment in two of our STEM labs at Canton High School, CV nine and CV eleven. As was mentioned, we have a regular refresh cycle for all of our labs, we have about 30 labs, and we identify when they, we would anticipate they would need to be with a equipment refresh. One of the labs was built out or refreshed last in 2018, the other in 2019. And we normally have a five-year refresh cycle, but we were able to identify that we could stay in, in one of those labs this sixth year, so to speak. But we recognize that performance is starting to degrade, and we wanted to ensure that our students had what they needed to be successful in their classwork. So, these are CV, so these are STEM classroom, class labs, they do a lot of engineering, principles of engineering, they use Autodesk, Revit, Fusion, and so, we identified, after looking at a variety of models, a small form factor device, a computer with the latest 14th-gen i7 processor, 16 gigs of RAM, that would be more than suitable for that lab's needs. And I will offer that it comes presently with a 16-gig RAM memory. We will, if and when it's needed, upgrade and probably double it to 32, but for the foreseeable, we feel comfortable suggesting a 16-gig memory for those computers. So, 68 of those are requested in this resolution, and then alongside that, half or one of those labs monitors, we're also looking to refresh. And then, there'll be some trickle-down, and we'll be able to make all things well in those two labs, per your approval. Take any questions you might have.
All right. Member McQueen, we'll start with you.
I don't really have any questions. Well, I have a lot of questions about all of this verbiage, but
I apologize.
It's okay. I, I will defer to my tech savvy, tech savvy members.
All right. Patrick?
We went over this in-depth in the FNO meeting, and the memory was the only area that we had some initial concerns, and Mark assured us of that process and talked about the opportunity to add additional memory as necessary for these computers. So, we're, we're excited about this purchase and to refresh some of these machines.
My only question was about the memory, too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm surprised you don't want to know the, the brand and the SKU number for all of that.
It's all in the packet.
It's all, yeah. It's all there. It's cute.
It's cute. Josh?
I've been in both of those labs the last two years, and I will say that a lot of our work gets stored not on the device itself, so the storage won't be a problem, based on the current things that are already put into it and the lab software, so it should be fine.
Thank you for that affirmation. Appreciate it.
My only question is, the cost of the additional memory, is that something that you've already outlined and are projecting?
So, if we were to go now, the, to put it in as a bundled product, it would be another $150. And again, we are, we're not seeing the need now. When we look at, at other, you know, like Crucial and other, sort of, other companies that would sell that, that memory that we would need, if and when we need it, the price would be less than half that. So, when it, when and if that comes, we would probably then have to, you know, make that call, but I think it makes more sense for us to hold off now and then address that in a budget a year or two hence, if the need arises.
That's Martin. That's why we have you. All right. No other questions? All right. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I could tell you needed to say something, so I did cut my introduction a little short.
I apologize.
I wanted to mention that you were able to secure pricing through two cooperative contracts for a grand total of $56,931.30, and it will be funded by bond funds. And next on our agenda for your consideration this evening is approval for a resolution for document cameras purchase. This is a, a bundle of document cameras, and I will let Mark share the details.
Thank you, Jill. So, we have document cameras, these are here, I brought the one that we're proposing. They are basically a tool for teaching staff to use to be able to illustrate what might be on their desk, maybe something that they're writing or they're showing to students, it Maybe something that they're writing or they're showing to students, it might be something live or might be not, uh, you know. But, um, we have them in all of our classrooms. And, uh, we've had varying models, uh, since, well, we, we've had them for many years. Uh, but we, um, standardized for the high school in twenty fourteen with a, a model, uh, from Como. And then, uh, the next year, we did an IPEVO, different model than this one, at the middle schools. In the following year, uh, in twenty sixteen, um, a hover cam model at the elementaries. And then we've crossed our fingers and occasionally, um, made, uh, replacements when a failure happened. But we're now starting to see more, um, uh, consistent failures. Uh, and so we are proposing that we, um, periodically refresh, um, and target those failing units with this purchase of two hundred that we're putting for you tonight. We evaluated, I think, uh, six models, uh, to come up with this one. This is one, uh, that allows the teaching staff to connect using, uh, USB to their laptop. And they can do recordings and other things with it if it's directly connected to the laptop. But it can also be independent and connect via HDMI, so that the teacher can be working independently with their laptop independent. And this would be used as a different source for the display on the, on the projector or the, uh, flat panel. So this is the model that we're proposing and we will, um, get a small portion of what would be in our deployed fleet to see that we can shore up, uh, where we're having issues. Happy, and it's an eight megapixel camera, uh, and, uh, it does recording and et cetera. I have one if you want to look at it, but I will also just keep it here if you'd rather.
No, that does sound exciting. All right, Member McQueen?
I don't have any questions, thank you. But I do love a document camera.
The teachers are coming out now.
Oh, yeah.
Mark showed this and we had an in-depth discussion at FNO. We're excited about these replacements and it seems like it's got the right mix of technology. Uh, we discussed the, uh, potential for wireless versions, but that they weren't as, uh, uh, are you, you weren't used as often and were triple the price. So these wired units will be a, a better fit for us this school.
Okay, Member Westra?
So I was kind of confused, so we're going to deploy those all across the district, right? At all of the levels?
That, that's right, there'll be a small portion going to address where we're seeing failure at any of the, any of the levels, so.
So and then as they fail, you'll just, okay.
Yes.
That's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Josh?
Uh, just one question, is the camera an upgrade from previous models or is it the same?
Uh, it, it is, it's an upgrade, uh, in, uh, for the majority of the cameras that we have to date. We don't have them where they have a separate HDMI connection, so many of them, um, have to be tethered to a laptop. Uh, some of them are at eight, uh, eight megapixels, some are at just four. So for some people, it'll be similar, but they'll have a little bit more functionality because they can be standalone. In other cases, different.
And then I'm glad to hear that they have all the, the functionalities between, um, devices. Because, uh, in the past, when like a substitute needs to use the document camera to plug it into like the school Chromebooks that they're given, they can use the USB C now, so.
Yeah, no, we, 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 we test it against all, all anticipated devices.
Thank you.
Uh, my only question's about PD. So the invoice says Bloom provides professional development, so are you doing PD in-house or are they doing PD for the teachers?
So for these, we typically, wh- what we've normally done is the tech integration specialists will develop, uh, materials that will be circulated and they, um, and so when this come, when, when we've shared, um, cameras in the past, we've had, uh, video and asynchronous materials available. And that would likely be what we'll have, uh, with this. And this is actually, this is a model, we've had a small number of them already circulating. So we're already aware of how to address where people maybe need some training.
Great. Thanks for including teachers in this testing process.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All right, thanks again, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you. This purchase will also be funded with bond funds for a total of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred seventy dollars, uh, with pricing, uh, secured through the REMC contract.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to an action item, consider approval of resolution for property sale agreement, Tang, Tanger Center Property, Five Mile. Final reading, do I have a motion?
Madam, uh, Chairman Pro-
Chairperson pro tem.
Chairperson pro tem. I move that we consider approval of a resolution for a property sale agreement for Tanger Center Property, uh, at Five Mile Road. Uh, this is a final reading and the action item number is twenty-four oh five seventy-four.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it was moved by Member Kehoe, seconded by Member McQueen. I know we had a lot of discussions already, any other questions before we do a final vote? Anyone?
We've discussed this one.
Okay, yes. All right, so all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Okay, motion passes four zero. All right, let's, uh, move on to another action item. Consider approval of resolution for security window film. Final reading, and do I have a motion for that?
Madam President, I move that we consider, uh, approval for a resolution for the middle school math curriculum materials. Action item twenty four-
This is for the window film.
Sorry.
Tipped one.
Madam Chairman Pro Tem, I move that we consider approval of resolution for security window film. Final reading, action item twenty-four oh five seventy-five.
Hey, I'll second.
Thank you. It was moved by Treasurer Kehoe, seconded by Member McQueen. Again, we had, uh, in-depth discussions about this, but any other last minute questions before we take a vote? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Okay, motion passes four zero. All right, now moving on to the math materials. We have an action item from teaching and learning. Consider approval of resolution for middle school math curriculum materials, final reading, do I have a motion?
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve action item twenty-four oh five seventy-six. Consider approval of resolution for middle school math curriculum materials, final reading.
Second.
Thank you. It was moved by Member McQueen, seconded by Member Westra. And again, we've had, um, in-depth conversations at SPA at the last meeting and I appreciate Dr. Merritt sending us all the information, um, in board notes for the board to review additional materials as they came up in the last board meeting. So do you, do we have any other last minute questions? Okay. Taking your vote, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no? Your motion passes four zero. Okay, moving on to citizens' comments, I think I have one. It is, uh, Mark LaPointe.
Yes, I'm here. With the bells on. Good evening.
Good evening.
Who's the timekeeper? When does it start? Right now? Uh, Dr. Merritt, good to see you, board members. Uh, probably most of you don't know me or don't know me real well. My name is Mark LaPointe, I live at four five nine two zero Green Valley, Plymouth. I have lived in Plymouth all my life, I was born in Plymouth physically, uh, at the big Victorian mansion next to the Dairy King. I went to Our Lady of Good Counsel, I went to, uh, uh, East one year when it first opened and I went to THE Plymouth High. Um, I taught at Central Middle School for forty-five years. I am currently volunteering my time at East Middle School, uh, as a intramural director at lunchtime. And I also coached, uh, up until this year, the girls volleyball team and also the, uh, wrestling team. So I want to get to, uh, my two, uh, topics, concerns over bond money going to the phys ed and athletic facility at East. I understand that they are going to get new tile shower room floors. Nobody has taken a shower in those showers rooms for thirty or forty years. You're wasting your money. It needs to go to the gym floor. Please, go into that gym, put some tennis shoes on and run around in there and see what kind of grip you get. Those kids play at a different level than they played when they'd opened up that school in nineteen fifty-seven. They're bigger, they're stronger, they're faster, they deserve better. My next topic, concerns about the mascot change. I know you've heard it at, ad nauseam, but I haven't had my time here. I go back to being achieved in nineteen seventy-two, when I coached high school baseball at Canton High School. What is going to happen to the banners that hang in phase three now? What's going to happen to the trophies? What is going to happen to all that hardware? Now, I know what happened when they moved from old Plymouth High School out to Salem. Uh, my concern is what's going to happen to that stuff. And I, I, I hope it remains and I hope that maybe you'll reconsider. I run into Canton High School kids all the time that played for me, I had them in school, and they're very upset over this whole thing. Can't tell you how many kids have been on the phone with me, talking to me, what is the board doing? Why are they doing this? And I try to explain it to them, but, uh, it's not a very popular thing that you're doing. So, uh, I see that my time is just about up and I appreciate the time. Go visit East Middle School, go run around in that gym and you'll see what I mean. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, the board does not respond to citizens' comments, but Dr. Merritt will be following up with the questions that were raised.
I understand, we've been through this before.
Just for the public as well, that there is a follow-up in this process. All right, moving on to action item and discussion, we have a first reading of consider approval of policy, number twenty-four fifty-one, alternative education. And we're going to open it up for discussion. Member McQueen, do you want to go through it first or just go, go into the discussion?
I believe some members had some questions.
Okay, let's, let's get those questions.
Yeah, so I guess my question on the alternative high school, we've had a lot of conversations here at the board table around, um, the need for additional options to support our students, uh, that maybe wasn't a fit for us at the traditional, uh, park, um, that we have at PISA. And that, that the Starkweather School is certainly an option there. But I guess I have questions around, how will this, I, I understand that this is step one as part of a process. That the policy first has to be changed to allow this, but I don't know whether we've got, what are all the other steps that are part of this work and when are we talking about implementing this program?
Great question, can I just, um, add the fact that we discussed this in SPA? Um, there was a-
Obviously, I wasn't at SPA, so.
Right. So we, uh, Member Westra and I took a visit to Starkweather almost a year ago. And a lot of the conversations at SPA that have come up about Starkweather and its expansion, it made sense to have that discussion at SPA. So we asked for a general presentation and, um, Principal Kevin and many others shared some options. It was like, if this, then that. Limited space, here are some opportunities to expand space. They went through all the numbers with regard to what is the maximum capacity. So it was all looking at all the different scenarios, there's no plan. That was, um, finalized, discussed, it was all just more wonderings. What could happen, what might happen, what are the options, what are the possibilities? So Dr. Merritt, if you want to add to that.
Yep, I'm happy to speak to it too. So then, what, what came out of that, um, SPA presentation, there's a couple of things happening simultaneous right now. Um, Mr. Lane, our principal at Starkweather, is retiring at the end of this year. So we're currently seeking our next principal for Starkweather Academy, um, that's in the process of, uh, uh, in, initial interviews right now. The understanding of that is, as we bring that person in, there'll be an awareness of the fo, of the, the individual, that we are creating a, a plan for the next year to build out the plan to launch a new, um, initiative the following year. That's what we talked about in SPA, was not the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, but the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So next year would be a planning year where we look at, what does it look like to expand? How do we bring that in, in space, uh, into, um, into the space where we do that? Also, training for staff, looking at, um, programming in the building and all of those things. So the next year would be a planning year and the following year would then be the launch year into looking at how we better serve students who need a smaller learning environment at Starkweather, so.
Okay, that, that helps a lot to give me more context. I was worried that this was going to happen this fall.
Yep, nope.
And it, it just felt with, uh, with the new principal coming in that this was moving very, very fast.
Yep.
My second kind of related question is, um, we currently restricted to students that are sixteen to nineteen, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
In, in that process.
That's one of the things this policy change that you're looking at does, because it talks about a couple of things. So you'll notice that, um, some of the language around that was, was embedded in the old policy. So there's one piece there. The other piece is looking at our alternative ed programs and how we house our alternative programs and where we house our alternative programs, day programs, evening programs, things like that. So that one-year planning would encompass all of that. But some of the language that was used around that, there's two pieces. There's one in the People Accounting Manual, the Michigan Code, around, um, alternative ed programs in the same space as, um, high school age student ones. So it's also working with the MDE about what does that really mean about space? Is it the same building? Is it, you know, is it the same room? Obviously, we don't want, um, older adults in a space with younger students. But what does a space mean in those things? So we're doing that work with the MDE. And then you'll see in third paragraph here, where the old policy, if approved, to move to a new policy, would strike the first sentence that says, young people from the ages of sixteen through nineteen and, and then have this other piece. And then become, students not currently enrolled in the district may also attend upon meeting the enrollment requirements. That phrase itself was the one that's been kind of limiting for the ability to have, um, freshmen enter, immediately identified freshmen enter from middle school to high school. That phrase has been the one that has been cited multiple times since I've been here and previous to me in the district.
So I guess my question, when I look at this language, it, it seems a little bit confusing. Because that phrase was specifically putting a restriction on students that are not currently enrolled in the district. So if you were a student enrolled in the district and you were already a freshman or a, um, a, a sophomore and you're fourteen or fifteen years old, there's nothing in here that would restrict us from bringing those students in.
Correct, but it is something that sits in that MDE code around the high, the, um, alternative ed and, or, or adult ed and alternative ed students together. So it's a twofold piece.
How you can house the students, there's been some, a lot of ambiguity.
Yep.
So, um, our coun, our district council, John Cava, was also at these meetings to discuss the ramifications of that. Do they really mean you can't be in like the building or like, as Ms. Rell said, the room or the same? Like, there's a lot of differences in how, what, what was the intent of that program? Where, uh, Mr. Cava kind of feels that the intent was, you don't have fourteen-year-olds in a class with twenty-two-year-olds. Not, you're in this wing of the building completely separate from the high school program.
So isn't-
They're getting clarification on that.
Okay, because this language doesn't mention anything about the adult ed, um, uh, or is that what it's called, adult ed?
Yes.
Yes.
The adult ed portion of the process, is that?
Because that is, that's a separate program.
Mm-hmm.
Adult ed is separate from the Starkweather alternative program.
But the alternative program allows students up to twenty-one, twenty-two?
The alternative ed program allows students the same age as our traditional high school students. We, we shift the language around, um, graduation requirements, um, we have seat time waivers, different waivers. So unless it's a student with an IEP. So it still falls under the same, um, uh, requirements as the, the traditional requirements of the district. However, there, the, the major purpose, uh, and maybe it helps to go backwards on the major purpose of this language change. If you read the old language, it was, it's, um, it's not the most student-centered language. It's not the most positive language, right? It, it gives the op, op, opinion and assumption that, um, I just reading it, right? That the regular ed of, uh, regular ed program, um, isn't necessarily suited for students who are unwilling or unable to do this. What we're really looking at is, what's a way to support students who need a different environment, right? And so, um, yes, the policy itself was ambiguous to begin with, this language here. It's been cited in different ways throughout the history of PCCS and the history of Starkweather Academy. So getting rid of the ambiguity, one, and then also working with the MDE around legal language. So do we need to look at a different space on how we, how, how is our adult ed? Or is it that it's fine the way it is and we just have to make sure that there's no crossover within the building? That, there's a lot of, um, logistical pieces, but also the piece that as we bring the new leader in this year, um, building that, building that together and, and launching solidly the following year.
Okay, so two questions then, I think, that would help me to understand this. The language that we have right now doesn't preclude us from having younger students in the school at all. It just is a conflict that happens with respect to the adult ed, uh, process, which is not covered by this policy at, at all.
Correct.
And it's something we have to, to, to address and manage. So this is cleaning up the language, uh, around this process. It gives us more clarity around the work and that I'm on board with.
Correct.
This doesn't obligate us to take students at any particular age in the, in the process.
That's correct, yep.
It just gives us that flexibility.
Yep.
And really, the, the, the language that we have with respect to ages was not, it, there was, there was no teeth to this in, in terms of students that are currently enrolled in the district, because those students were already able to participate in that process, at least from this- because those students were already able to participate in that process, at least from this policy.
Policy point, yes.
But there may be some concerns from the, the adult ed process and whether we're in compliance with the rules and that has to get worked out independently of this work.
I do want to share though with Starkweather, um, remember that it is more of like a county-based program? So it is our resident students as well as, um, non-resident students attend as a part of that program. So that would pre-
Fair enough. So that would, I mean, obviously, we are doing a great job serving those students and we get demand for that program. It is an outstanding program. I think almost every board member wants to go to the graduation because how special that, that is. Um, so I'm, I'm a huge supporter of the program. I was just trying to understand the parameters of how this fits together with the whole process. And we received some communications from people on this and I was trying to understand the big picture on this. This is the beginning step.
Right. This is the, yes. It's about looking through all our policies, practices and then things to, to provide better clarity, as you cited, and also make sure that we have that flexibility as we look at the needs of our young people. So it's, it's helping, clean it all up to provide that flexibility.
And then this, the policy will then be, this, the, the rest of the work is going to be SPA and Dr. Merritt's team and Ms. Rail's team and the Starkweather people. To, to, the enrollment, all the programming, that's not ours. We just want to make sure that they have the parameters to do that work.
That makes sense.
And to get rid of, get rid of the deficit language around it because that's an excellent program and that staff works tirelessly, which we hear at graduation. And this gets rid of that idea that it's a less attractive alternative for students who need it. Because that's important in our district.
I also want to add that this gives people plenty of opportunities to come to committee meetings through SPA and at the board level. So when community members, teachers, others have concerns, that would be an opportunity for people to attend those meetings and talk about those concerns.
And then the last somewhat related question to this is, this is servicing a need that we oftentimes find from students where they just don't fit in at the larger environment that's at Park, uh, at, at the Park, at the, uh, PSEP environment. I know that for so many students, it's a fantastic, uh, environment. And I know we've done some work with, uh, the small learning communities and with other, with the academies and the other things there. Will we continue to do that kind of investments and find ways to try to integrate students in, at, at that level? Because I, I, I'd hate to see us bring so many of our ninth graders into this program immediately instead of trying to find an opportunity to support them at the, at the PSEP campus and give them the supports that they need to be successful.
When we discussed this in SPA, I think that a lot of the discussion revolved around, there are some ninth graders that do need it.
Yes.
It's not necessarily a large percentage. And if there are a large percentage, then perhaps there are other alternatives like the small learning communities or like a ninth grade academy or whatever that could duplicate some of what is at, what is good about Starkweather without disturbing the, the good that is at Starkweather, if that makes sense.
Okay. Great.
Dr. Merritt, did you want to add any more?
I'll say.
All right.
Thank you for giving me the context.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks for asking. All right. We are now up to-
So this is only first read, so we don't-
Yes. Right.
Okay. Got it.
So we're now up to follow-up board questions.
We had two follow-up board questions that have been satisfied. The first was around the math curriculum material, so we have that and that was approved this evening. And the second was a security film and that was added to, the data, um, was added on the bidders. So those are satisfying.
All right.